Welcome, everybody, to the Placerville City Council Regular Meeting Tuesday, February 27, 2024. Will you all rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Mayor No?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to number three ceremonial matters, new officer swear in, Chief Friend.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you one of the newest members of the Placerville Police Department. You know, when I was thinking about what to say about Alex, I couldn't help but think of just the remarkable men and women that we've been able to hire over the last couple of years, and Alex is no exception to that. Come on up here with me. We're going to suffer together. Alex is a graduate of Oak Ridge High School, so he's what we look for. He's a local commodity that knows the area and definitely understands the culture of Placerville and Eldorado County as a whole. Alex, his desire to serve started at a young age when he joined the Army, and he just didn't join the Army. He volunteered for the Ranger Regiments. So for those that don't know, the Rangers are almost at the level where Marines are. So. He gets to hear this all the time. And subsequently, served combat deployments during the Global War on Terror. So truly an American patriot, and we're absolutely thrilled to have him. I'm going to let him introduce some very important people in his life, and then we'll get on with the swearing in part of this.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. This is my dad, Dave, and my mom, Julie. They've been a huge supporter of me going through the military and going into law enforcement, and that's very important, you know, in this job, to be able to come home and talk to them about stuff. And they've been with me, you know, every step of the way in my life, and couldn't have asked for better parents. So, and yeah, I mean, coming to PPD, it was just a breath of fresh air, you know. I walked in the door, I felt like I was right at home. Rode around with Chief for about three hours in my orientation. We got to know him and just felt like this is the right place to be, you know, plenty of work to be done out there. I love being proactive. And yeah, it's been a lot of fun so far, and I am excited to keep this train moving, so.
Short and sweet.
You know, after meeting Alex's parents, I could see where he gets a lot of this from. They're just, they're a joy to talk to. They did their job right. They raised a great man, and I'm happy to have him in the Placerville Police Department. So now I'm going to invite him to stand up here, and I would like to also invite his family to stand with him. I, this is a little unorthodox. Normally, it's just the chief and the officer, but in our profession, we can't do what we do without having that strong family support system at home to help get us through those bad days, and we will have bad days. We're his family while he's wearing that uniform. You're his family when it's off, so we're all in it together. So Alex, stand attention, please. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Alex Alexander.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations, Officer Smith. Your mom's going to pin your badge.
Just stick it in there.
Perfect. One more round of applause. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. If you want to say a few words, and then I would ask that we be able to take a photo with the council?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Alex. We're so excited to have you as part of our family. And yeah, we would love to come take a picture with you.
If we can get out of here.
Congratulations, Alex. Okay, we will move on to number four, closed session report. Attorney Abrahimi.
I will report out on closed session. The council did meet in closed session on two items. There was no public comments in advance of meeting, and the council provided direction on item number one.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to number five, adoption of the agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We will move on to item six, announcements and presentations to the public, brief comments by the city council. We'll start with Councilmember Yarborough.
I have none for tonight.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Yeah, I had the, this is fun. This is like one of the privileges of being a city council member. I got to be a judge in not the one chili cook-off, but at the other chili cook-off. That was at the Elks Lodge, so that was a lot of fun to do. I did miss the Battle of the Badge one, which was I was bummed about. Apparently, and I was asking some of the other judges, and apparently, we have to do better next year, Chief. We got to get into the top three. It's rigged, yeah. That's what I was saying. It's our hometown, so we got to win this thing. That, and then, that was a lot of fun. And then last night, we were at the, what do you call that, open house for the Clay Street, which I was really happy to see the amount of people that showed up for it, a lot of new faces of people that aren't, you know, some of the familiars that are always here with us, which was great, because at least it shows there's some interest, and other people are getting the message about this big project that's coming out in the city. So that's it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Gottberg?
I have none.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
I went to the same workshop that some of us went to, and I want to commend staff. They put together good, with the consultants, put together a good presentation, and I think we got some good input, and I think it gives us an idea of some way to move forward with that project, aside just finishing up the environmental documentation and getting the NEP and SEQUA stuff taken care of. So all in all, a good night.
Yeah, I'll just echo that. A lot of good public comment and input at that meeting, so that was good. Okay, we will move on to number seven, consent calendar. Does any council member want to pull anything? No? Okay, we'll open this for public comment on the consent calendar.
Sue Rodman, City of Placerville, and on 7.7, I think we certainly should ask for some money from the county to help with the aquatic center. I think that Terry Zeller has done an outstanding job keeping that aquatic center going, and since the county population supplies about 75% of the people who use the aquatic center, it's only fair that they contribute something to it. And this doesn't seem to be at all out of line to me.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, it is me again. I was here last, last meeting, and I have since then met with Mr. Rivas and expressed my...
This is for the consent calendar. Is, do you have a comment on 7.1 through 7.8? Nope, nope, you're thinking...
I thought you were ready for...
Item eight is next item.
Sorry.
Thank you. No problem. Okay, we will close public comment and bring the consent calendar back to the council.
I'll move the consent calendar.
All second.
Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. Let's move to number eight, public comment. Now come talk to us. Sorry.
I am so sorry. Okay, so anyway, I was here last week, and this is regarding the Clubhouse, the Mental, the Illness, National Association of Mental Illness Clubhouse, moving in next door to the dance studio.
Okay.
I brought that to your attention last time I was here, and since then, we've done several emails back and forth, and we've met with Mr. Rivas just yesterday, but I wanted to pinpoint some of my concerns, and that handout does list them. The Putnam Clubhouse, they have a video that explains their program, and it states that the members are people that are living with or recovering from serious mental illness, such as schizophrenia and bipolar disorder and more. The video also states the club can be in lieu of incarceration. And I do support anything to help mental illness, and I just think it's a wrong place to be right next to the dance studio. The club near our children pose a potential risk for something to go on. And then if something does go wrong, who's responsible if that were to happen? I've asked and posed the question to their organization if there might be a history of anything upsetting or harmful that had happened at any other facility. Our front door is less than 30 yards from their front door. We need to know, are the members screened? How did they acquire their membership? Can the homeless off the street come in and participate in the program? And I am calling our great police department often, because when we do have a problem, they are there very quickly and handle it for me, although I feel like they should have their focus elsewhere, but I do appreciate that help. Are the members currently in therapy? Are they under psychiatric care? Are they taking their medications? What is the ratio of the member to the employee? How many members will be enrolled? Is this an appropriate place, a strip mall, for this clubhouse? It seems like it would be better suited maybe in the medical community. Their video states there is only another clubhouse in California, and I was just wondering why Placerville instead of Sacramento or another big city. It was by chance that we found out that they were moving in. None of the neighbors have been notified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Cheryl Webb, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the NAMI facility as well. I'm a grandmother of two little dancers on, at On Stage Production Studio at 1309 Broadway. I'm also here to talk about the NAMI Clubhouse facility wanting to open right next door at 1319 Broadway, within 30 yards of On Stage Production Dance Studio, that has over 200 families and their children attending. On Stage Production has been serving the needs of our youth and adults in Eldorado County since 1991, 32 years. They're a fabulous studio, and they do great work for the children and adults. And my daughter-in-law has deep concerns. Her kids go there, and has written this statement, and she would like me to read it, as she cannot attend this evening. In regards to the NAMI Clubhouse facility, planning to move into the space at 1319 Broadway, this organization seems to do great work. However, I do not believe that it is responsible or safe for them to conduct their work next door to a well-established dance studio that is a safe and fun place for hundreds of children from ages two and up. As a Placerville native and mother of three girls, two of which attend the dance studio mentioned, I have some serious concerns. While I am sure NAMI staff take precautions to make their facility a safe and organized space, I do not feel confident that they can promise the same once their patients leave their doors or before they enter them. Per NAMI's website, some of their members attend their facility in lieu of incarceration. While I believe that it is possible for those that have a past crime to change their future, but it seems completely irresponsible to rehabilitate and work on the mental health of these individuals in such close proximity to children. How can NAMI promise that our children will not witness unsavory behavior in the parking lot outside their facility? How can they promise that our children will be completely safe from these individuals that are in need of mental care? There is no logical way they can promise that. I would respectfully ask that this facility not be open in such close proximity to our children. Thank you for your time, Claudia Webb. So our primary concern is the children. Given the unpredictable nature of some mental health conditions, we worry about possible risks that could arise. So just want to take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Part three. I'm Mackenzie. I have, should I wait for the timer to run out, or are we going to restart?
They'll work it. They'll get you your three minutes.
Yeah, perfect. My name is Mackenzie. I've been with On Stage Production since I was four years old, so I grew up there, and I'm currently now a teacher, and my own children now go to the dance studio. Sorry. Again, our main concern is the safety of our children. For 33 years, Sheri's provided this safe, well, environment for kids to be able to just have a healthy and safe place, which is rare right now in the time that we have. And what we really want is the city to be able to back us and support us before allowing any sort of risk or harm to come to those dancers. Sorry, I got all nervous once I got up here. And what we need to know now is what is our next step? We've been trying to reach out to NAMI. We've attended two council meetings. We've had a meeting with Pierre Rivas, and so what we really need are some answers from NAMI on what the services they are going to be providing, what are the members going to be like, are there going to be criminals within 30 feet of our dancers? There are also proposed that the area in between us is a smoking area, which gives their members direct view of all of our children coming in and out, in their dance clothes, to their cars, our teenagers. So we're just really trying to promote the safety of our dance studio and the well-being of our business, because if parents do have concerns, that could jeopardize Sheri's business as well. So, thank you very much for your time. I hope we're, I know, we're going to, we're going to keep coming back, so you'll get used to this until we get some good resolution on this matter. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Realize we can't discuss this at the council level. I would encourage you to reach out to council members outside of this council meeting to have discussions with us. Okay? Are there any other public comments?
Sue Rodman, Placerville, I would agree with these people. We don't want a mental health rehabilitation facility with a smoking area right next to a dance studio that caters to children. Not a good idea, Placerville. And I would also like to say that I really appreciate all the work that Terry Zeller has done. And now he's leaving us, I just found out, and I'm sad to see that, but I think he has worked very hard with less than ideal support, and certainly a lot less than ideal budgets, and performed miracles in spite of it. So I'd like to say thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Sue. Is there anyone else? Does staff want to make any comments?
I wanted to ask Pierre if he could. Pierre did meet with them and just talk about what that next step is, that they can be involved in, what will be required for this business to come forward. So if you could just briefly, Pierre, we can't discuss it, but just briefly talk about that, please.
Sure. I've spent a rather significant amount of time in phone discussions with the NAMI folks. It's a sort of an umbrella nonprofit organization that provides financial support to what's called a Putnam Clubhouse. And it is my understanding that there's one existing Putnam Clubhouse that's located in Concord, California, Contra Costa County, and it's located within the Contra Costa Health Centers. So it's on, it's within county property operating. And I did see a rather lengthy and very detailed video on how it operates. So staff is currently in more of a reactive stage. In other words, there's no decision to be made at this time, because staff does not have an application from the Putnam Clubhouse folks. So the way it stands now is they were proposing to locate at 344 Broadway, I think is where they were planning on locating, that was in close proximity to the existing dance studio. So that particular property is zoned highway commercial, and in the highway commercial zone, it's very focused on more traveling highway users for the public and that kind of thing. And so this sort of use, we would categorize it as more of a vocational, educational facility, where their clients are those that maybe suffer from schizophrenia, or bipolar, or those types of disorders. But they're well enough, either under some medical supervision, or other medication or something, where they're looking to be trained and re-enter as more productive citizens of society. So we're looking at this as a vocational, as I said. So when you look at, it's code section 10-3-3, and that section lists a number of uses that are allowed by, they're allowed by a conditional use permit in any zone. And so we find that at this particular location, it would trigger a conditional use permit, meaning that once they submit that application, it opens up then, you know, a public forum. Staff would review the application. We would take it to the planning commission, and then there would be the planning commission that would render a decision either to approve, or deny, or modify conditions of approval on that conditional use permit. And it would be subject to appeal to the city council if there was a member of the public or the applicant that didn't like the particular decision made by the planning commission. So I recently did talk with NAMI again, and they are looking at an additional, another site. And this other site that's located on Placerville Drive is zoned commercial, and the commercial zone is much more broad. It allows all kinds of educational facilities, such as this particular use, and it would be allowed by right. So that's a big difference between this site that they're looking at and the site they're looking at on Placerville Drive, which is zoned commercial, which it would mainly mean just pulling a building permit, a tenant improvement, if you will, to do whatever they need then for the use. And so that, I think, is the key difference. So for this site, there's, there'd be a lot of opportunity for public involvement, as opposed to the other side that's zoned strictly commercial, would be by right, and then it would just be allowed through a building permit if they were going to do any modifications to the building.
Thank you, Pierre. Appreciate that.
I just had one comment. Because the first location is subject to a conditional use permit that's appealable to you, my request is that you actually not have any conversations with opponents or proponents at this time, because it can come before you.
Okay, thank you very much. I hope that gives you a lot of information. Thank you. Okay, that concludes oral communications. We will move on to written communications.
Madam Mayor, we did not receive any written communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to number nine, items pulled from the consent calendar. We have none, which brings us to item 10, which we have three. 10.1, consideration of an urgency ordinance banning needle and syringe exchange programs in the City of Placerville. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I'll tackle this, but the city attorney who assisted with this is also available to answer questions. So the item before you is to proposal to adopt an urgency ordinance prohibiting the establishment, operation, use, and participation in needle and syringe exchange programs within the City of Placerville. Over the last year, staff, along with staff and elected officials from Eldorado County and the city council, have met on several, a couple of different occasions at least, with the California Department of Public Health regarding their proposal to allow Sierra Harm Reduction to operate a syringe program within the City of Placerville, syringe exchange program within the City of Placerville and Eldorado County. Initially, they granted that, and then they pulled it back and did some more work based on concerns were brought before them by the county and the city with operating these programs within this area. In the end, after further review, they came back and actually did not allow the services within Eldorado County, but still allowed it within the City of Placerville, which did not seem right to us. Now, one thing during that review period that was going on was the county did adopt this same ordinance. I talked to the county. They did not, however, forward that ordinance to the state after they adopted it, but the state may have been aware of that. I don't know. And so after further review and our concerns and previous action that council had taken to send a letter objecting to these programs, we thought it was appropriate to bring this back to allow you to at least consider, and at our last council meeting, Mayor No actually requested that this be considered. So what we brought back is an ordinance which actually prohibits, an urgency ordinance, which means it takes effect immediately, would prohibit these syringe exchange programs within the City of Placerville. Now, we need to note that there are already two programs, to our understanding, that are operating within the City of Placerville. One is out of Marshall Hospital, and the other is out of county public health, out of their public health offices. So those particular programs are actually exempt from this by definition in the ordinance. So it wouldn't affect them, but it would not allow outside groups to come in and operate these programs, such as the Sierra Harm Reduction Program that is proposed. So with that, what we have for you tonight is to adopt this urgency ordinance, again, which would take effect immediately and would be available for us to enforce. which would take effect immediately and would be available for us to enforce immediately. And it's under our understanding and conversations with the district attorney's office that he would enforce this also. This urgency ordinance is only good, and this is where I may have to have the city attorney help me, but it goes for 45 days, and then based on studies and information, we'd be back after those 45 days. You can extend it actually up for, up to 10 months and 15 days, or up to 22 months, correctly? Correct. So that's what we'll continue, we will, this will come back before you in 40, well, before it expires after the 45 days for consideration for you to extend the ordinance. And I think that's it. We can go into more detail and provide other information if you'd like, either myself or the city attorney.
Thank you. Do we have questions or comments from the council before we open it to public comment?
So what's the difference in making this an urgency ordinance to a regular ordinance?
An urgency ordinance is required to have a four-fifths vote for approval, whereas an ordinance is just majority vote. An urgency ordinance can be introduced and adopted upon first reading, and we are not required to do the 10-day public hearing notice pursuant to government code section 65090. In addition to that, an urgency ordinance bypasses planning commission review, first review, second, and then we also don't have to wait 30 days for it to become effective. It becomes effective immediately upon adoption.
Okay.
If you were to do a regular ordinance, we would introduce tonight, adopt that in two weeks at your next meeting, and then there's another 30-day waiting period, so.
After it had already gone to the planning commission, too.
Okay. Can you do both in conjunction?
You can do both in conjunction.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comment? Okay. We will open this to public comment.
It seems to me like it's a slap in the face for the state to come down and say, okay, we'll obey what you want for this, for the county, but city of Placerville, you get it anyway, whether you like it or not. So I definitely think we need to pass this ordinance, especially given the, the track record for Sierra harm reduction and their, what the, what our police department has found out and what was in the two letters. I think that we definitely need this. And I don't think we want to wait 40, 45 days, 15 days, and then another 30 days. No, I think it needs to go now.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? No? Okay. We'll bring this back to the council for discussion and a motion.
Just wanted to make a couple of comments. I mean, this started, I started when I was mayor, we're talking about this originally, and, you know, I've always had, I think, a philosophical issue with this anyways, in terms of the needle exchange and whether the, I understand the micro, micro versus macro effects of this, and that there's success stories, but just like what we've done with homelessness throughout, the macro story tells a much different tale of woefully, you know, just poor results, even though there's plenty of micro stories that you can point to where there's has been successes. So I do have an issue, and I, and I think I had an even bigger issue with the state only saying, in the city of Placerville, without ever having a conversation with us, we just really got the letter back from CDPH saying nowhere else but okey-dokey in, in Placerville. Now, they did, they did, to their credit, they did lean it down some to home deliveries. But my problem with that, because I, I'm pretty sure this is where the law would, would reside, would be is if your address is on Upper Broadway on, on the hill, or, you know, on Coors Mountain, they're not going to be able to say that that doesn't qualify as a home address. So to me, that essentially means if you're homeless, you're going to be, still be able to pick these up and deliver them to you anywhere, you know, in, in a public right-of-way or even on private property. So I'm not 100% sure that they would just be, you know, I live at 1313 Mockingbird Lane, that that's going to be the, the address that they come and deliver my, my needles to. So I think this is the correct course for the city. It puts us in alignment with the county, and I think it prepare, it better protects our citizens as well as those, you know, I, you know, that, that are users. They do have options, but I don't want to make those, I just don't like the idea of those potential needles getting out into the community. And, you know, to David, what David had said earlier, I, I think there is probably some worth doing a dual track of having our emergency, but at the same time putting forward a, a regular ban as well, so, a regular ordinance as well, you know, for long-term. So with that, I guess I will say I would make a motion to move the urgency ordinance forward in conjunction with having a ordinary or, or a regular ordinance moved through the process as well.
Does, any other comments from council members? Okay. We have a motion, but let's.
Normally, you would go ahead and get a second, and then you can have discussion after that if you want.
Okay. Does anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay.
Yeah, so for me, you know, in looking at, essentially, I agree with the CDC and the state in terms of the research studies that have been done on harm reduction programs, reducing syringe litter, reducing the number of overdose deaths, reducing bloodborne transmission disease, and not increasing, you know, drug use or crime rates in communities. I haven't seen any statistical data for the city of Placerville that indicates a correlation between Sierra harm reductions activities and increasing syringe litter, increasing the rate at which there are overdose deaths. There is some evidence based on what we have from public health that it has reduced the transmission rates of hepatitis C. There is no change in HIV, so we do have that data. But for me, I generally think syringe exchange programs are more beneficial than they are harmful. And until I have specific data for the city of Placerville that demonstrates to me the specific program of Sierra harm reduction is causing more harm than good, that would be, you know, something that would change my mind, but I certainly don't think that we are in an emergency situation, and I don't support this ordinance or the rationale behind it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Of the two people I don't readily recognize in the audience, are you from Sierra harm reduction? Okay, thank you. I, I tend to agree from a statistical sort of standpoint with, with Nicole. I wasn't here when we had the other conversation, so I don't know what evidence was brought by PD or anything else. I'm kind of in favor of doing something like this, only because I think it's obnoxious that the person who is actually the vendor for this contract isn't even here to talk about it. I mean, especially if you consider that their entire now sales area, at least in this county, is the city of Placerville. I think I would have been here trying, unless they just get money and they don't ever do their jobs, which I guess is possible with the state of California. I think it's a little obnoxious that the state of California, like many things that they do, has just rolled in and said, we don't care what you think. And it would be nothing, it would be something if we didn't have opportunities to exchange needles in town, as it's been pointed out. County health does it, and Marshall Hospital does it. So it's not like we're sitting here saying, no, 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 we don't want this, and putting our fingers in our ears, and trying to pretend that the problem doesn't exist. And then to have this been literally the line of least resistance, the county says, no, okay, now we'll just do it all in Placerville. It's just lazy governance from the state of California, and if anything, we should just push back on it because it's lazy. They should have the, the wherewithal to come to us and say, how would you like to implement this? The only ways in that we got any, apparently, any kind of alterations to the previous way was because we screamed at them. And in defense of us, the previous situation was not because they were able to, Sierra harm was out there all over the county. We don't know what that universe is like when it's just the city. No, I don't think it's going to attract drug users, and I don't think it's going to promote drug, I don't believe that stuff. On the other hand, we don't know what the effects could be. And I'm kind of would like to level the playing field. And then if the city, if Sierra harm and the state of California wants to come and make a compelling reason to do this in our community that isn't just, well, we have a lot of money and, and these things work in other places, come and make it happen. You know? A program should benefit everybody in some degree or another. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we have a needle exchange program in the city. We have two different places. We have one at Marshall Medical, we have one with Health and Human Services. So it's not that we don't have a needle exchange program. We have another vendor who wants to come in, in my opinion, and just do what they want. We've had our chief of police observe them for an hour without returning any needles and just giving them out. In my opinion, that's not an exchange program. We've had our El Dorado County sheriffs in several instances recover preloaded needles from them that were being distributed. So there's an abuse and there's a, you know, there's, was no solution from, from Sierra harm about how to mitigate these problems that they are causing. I feel confident moving forward that we are doing our part. I've said this on a lot of issues, we have a role to play, but we are not supposed to be the sole solution for El Dorado County. I think that we are doing our part, we are supporting that, and that we don't need the state coming in with programs that undermine what we're doing in the outreach programs we have. I sat in that call with the state where they expressed there are rural areas that have absolutely nothing, and people aren't doing anything, and I understand that, and I respect that, but that's not what's happening in the city of Placerville. We are doing something, we do have outreach programs, we do have those programs, and I think that we should be able to have some say-so in how that happens. So are there any other discussion on this item? With that, we'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Gottberg?
No.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Motion passes with a four-fifths vote.
Okay. That moves us to 10.2. Consider adoption of an ordinance amending the city's current municipal code relating to purchasing to allow the use of cooperative purchasing agreements. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For many years, the city has used cooperative purchasing agreements for various items, including supplies and equipment. This includes our contract we use for the state contract for police patrol vehicles. Recently, we used a state contract for our pickleball courts that we are halfway done with, that we're getting done with, office supplies, and many other items where these have been bid out by state agencies in a master contract that we are allowed to piggyback on in order to obtain the value of those, those bid results. Recently, in discussion with our city attorney, it was determined that although we've done this for many years, and it's allowed by the state, there's not something specific in our purchasing ordinance that allows for us to do that. And just to make sure and put it, clean it up a little bit, we felt it was important to adopt this ordinance to allow that to happen so that we can continue with that process. So what we're asking tonight is to simply introduce the ordinance and waive the first reading, introduce the ordinance, and it will be brought, brought back to you in your next meeting for adoption.
Okay, great. Do we have questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open this for public comment. Seeing none, we will bring this back to the council for a motion.
I'll move the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Thank you.
That might be a record.
Okay. We will move to 10.3. Consider an ordinance amendment for reserve police officers designated Level 1, authority in accordance with California Penal Code 830.6A2. Chief Wren.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And would you believe, of all the time I've been in the council, this is the first time actually introducing any kind of amendment to an ordinance, so it's a special, special day for me today. So I stumbled through it.
Take your time, don't, don't get nervous.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm really not sure how to do this, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna wing it. So we, we have reserve officers here in the, in the city of Placerville, and, and those are authorized by ordinance. That ordinance is Title VI, Chapter 13, titled Reserve Police Officers. What I'm proposing is that we add a paragraph under their duties and services, which lists them as designated Level 1 Reserve Police Officers. Now, to be perfectly honest, I didn't know there was a designation. We train all of our officers, regardless of part-time or full-time status, to the highest level possible. We don't say you're a reserve, so you're going to get part of the training, it is just for consistency's sake, obviously liability, and ensuring that our training standards are the highest possible. Everybody gets the same level of training. What I didn't realize is that per the vehicle code, I'm sorry, penal code, unless I designate them, their peace officer powers are only good while they're working. So this designated status will now allow them to function as police officers during their off-duty time. What that means is if they see something, now they can act in an official capacity while they're off-duty, and they'll be afforded the same rights and privileges as any other full-time police officer. If, if they're not designated and they decide to act, which I know they will, because they're good people and they're cops, and they want to stop bad people from doing bad things, there are some potential liabilities, some potential policy violations that they could be subject to, and, and we don't want to do that. We want to ensure that our officers are, are covered if they're out there doing, you know, the work that we expect them to do. So what this does is add a paragraph within that section granting me the authority to designate them with the state as being designated Level 1 Reserve Police Officers. There needs to be some language change here at the recommendation of the city attorney, and I'll defer to her exactly what we're going to write on that.
Thank you, Chief. I recommend that we add a sentence to the enactment as follows, that the city council hereby authorizes the police chief to deputize reserve officers as designated Level 1 officers in his discretion pursuant to state law, and that will allow him to be able to effectuate the penal code requirements.
Thank you.
So that, that's it. Just a quick snapshot of our reserve program. We have three reserves, that's what we cap it as, we found that that's most manageable for us, and a lot of our reserves are retired full-time police officers. So they're coming into, to the department with, with oftentimes more experience than, than I have. So I'm confident and comfortable giving them that authorization to act as, as peace officers during their non-duty times, so.
Great.
That I do.
Great. You did a good job. Do we have any questions from the council?
No.
No? We will open this to public comment, 10.3. Seeing none, we will bring it back. Oh, oh, okay. Come on up. Couldn't see you there, behind the podium, sorry.
I'm John Secor, and a citizen of Placerville. Couple of questions. Has the police association been advised about this, so they could be, confer over it?
It would not be a meet and confer matter.
Are she taking possible positions away from the officers?
No, these are positions that already exist. This is just granting the, those positions additional authority during their off-duty times.
That may be a debatable point. The council, you'd mentioned that you're following all the laws, including the Ralph Dills Act and that? Meet and confer requirements?
Sounds like a legal question to me.
You don't know, that's fine. You can just say I don't know.
We, we can reach out to the POA and meet and confer prior to second reading to ensure, but this does not affect any of their existing wage an hour or working conditions.
Have they been notified about this in order to respond to it? Give them a chance to either agree or disagree?
I, I will just say that I don't know that we've specifically notified them, but I'm pretty sure they're aware of it, based on, based on what I know.
The members of our reserve force are members of the POA, so I would. The members of our reserve force are members of the POA, so I would assume that the entire POA is aware of it at this point.
When I worked for Puerak, I found a number of instances where things like this turned out to be a bugaboo. So I'm just asking if it's up and up? No problem.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't see where this falls within a meet and confer issue, and, and these are POA members that we're talking about.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening. Ryan Carter. Great job, Chief. I fall into that category that Chief Wren was talking about, that I'm only a peace officer when I'm on the clock, and I fully support this. More good guys with the power to take action can only help our city stay safer, so thank you. This is a great idea, and I fully support it.
Thank you, Ryan.
Sir Rodman, I also think this is a good idea and definitely will support it. When people are peace officers, that tends to be their, that's who they are, and it's 24/7. And so to limit them as to what they can do when they're off-duty seems like that's crazy. I think we should, you know, if, once you're a cop, you're a cop. There's no doubt about it. So I think this is a good idea and prevents them from being sued when they're just acting as a police officer.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion and motion.
I move staff recommendation with adjusted language brought by.
I'll second that.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember, excuse me. Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to our public hearings, number 11, 11.1. Consider approving an 8.28% increase in the traffic impact mitigation fees equivalent to the change in the engineering new record construction cost index from December 2021 to January 2024 effective April 27, 2024, as shown in Exhibit A. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mayor No and City Council. The proposed item before you this evening to increase the traffic impact mitigation fees, TIM fees, in accordance with Section 8-15-8 of the city code, is for all intents and purposes considered an annual routine item. Section 8-15-8 of the code includes the provision for the TIM fee to be adjusted on January 1st of each calendar year by a percentage that's equal to the inflation rate of construction costs for the prior year. This inflation rate is based upon the engineering news record of construction cost index. The most recent TIM fee inflationary adjustment, adjustment was approved by the city council on February 8, 2022, and accounted for a 7.34% rate of inflation at that time. Since the last adjustment, inflation increased by 8.28% over that two-year period. The proposed fees supporting the increase are summarized in a table in staff's report. In the report, you will also see that the city's TIM fees remain less than the county's TIM fees, except for the minor commercial category, which is slightly more. The reason for this is that the county's program is more focused on residential growth, whereas the city's program focuses on the density of the community. Therefore, minor commercial is the biggest source of trip generation within the city. Should council approve this item, the new fees would go into effect in 60 days. Any applications received after the close of business on April 26, 2024 would be subject to the new TIM fees. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report before you. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council?
One. Thank you. I guess, you know, I'm going back to when we had the discussion on our, our waste fees and, you know, the, the thought that the inflation was really high because for a moment in time, in terms of where that number should have been or how high we wanted to go, and I, I, I look at these and I'm wondering if this is also not, you know, you set, you set a base after this as you go forward. You know, is this a momentary high inflation? I'm just looking at, what's the, I mean, have we averaged around this height, like 7%, 8%? Or is this just sort of because of this timing? Because my worry is that we have a really, even though we're lower than the county, it's still a pretty big amount, and so I just wanna make sure that we're not creating a new base that will, you know, come down as inflation starts to, you know, readjust downward. So I'm looking for more, you know, information here. I wanna try to stay consistent when it comes to these inflationary numbers and percentages.
So I do think our TIM fees are pretty low compared to the county, and we are currently in the process of going through a complete amend or update to the TIM fee program. So that's gonna take into account, you know, all of the project costs and any new projects that would be added at that time. And so, you know, even if this changes this year, there's still going to be more changes coming to the TIM fee program. And so that will probably provide a more accurate representation of the exact construction costs at that time.
Okay. I mean, I just, because, I mean, we all talk about affordability and housing, so I really wanna be mindful of what, of what these fees are, even though I know, you know, we're not trying to make money here, but I am really concerned about an 8% increase and then where we go forward. So, but I appreciate the numbers. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we open it to public comment? Okay. Let's open this to public comment. Don't be shy. Step right up. Okay. We will bring this back to council for further discussion and motions. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. I don't, you know, I, I, I'm cognizant of the concerns that Michael brought up about kind of these blips in inflation and then feeding him into it, but my guess is that if we're in fact gonna do a, a review of the TIM fee program in general, this number's gonna be small compared to whatever number comes back to us, because, I mean, there's a reason probably why we're, well, there's a, there's some structural and probably political reasons why we're behind the county. I agree. I agree. I've always wanted to ask somebody, though, if we could magically wave a wand over somebody and reduce and remove every fee, every one, even the ones we don't have control over. My guess is a house would still be too expensive. You know? This, I mean, it's a death by a thousand cuts potentially, but this is not the reason why someone's not building a house in town. And then even the new number is not the reason. And we have to be current, and we have to impact mitigate.
So will the review of the TIM program, will it be giving us some sort of average, you know, 20-year, 15-year, 10-year, you know, working our way up of what these fees look like on average? Because, I mean, obviously, you know, if you're counting into inflation in it, and like Councilman Saragosa said, with the blips in inflation that we've had throughout, you know, the last few decades, are we gonna see a difference? I mean, are, is 8, 8.28%, you know, should that be more like 6.5? That's what I'm kinda curious about.
Yeah, I think the new project costs will, you know, be more reflective of, you know, actual construction costs when we go through the update, but I think that's why we have the language to do the updates every year, because we do have to account for inflation. And so we can look at that as we're building the TIM fee costs, trying to look at that, but we, we can't always predict what inflation is gonna be either.
Okay. Thank you. Nicole?
I mean, I would say I have similar concerns about, you know, affordable housing and affordability of new development, and I think that's something that we want, but also in looking at the numbers, you know, we're significantly below the county, so we are still, you know, if that's a driver for you, we are still a much more desirable place to develop than in the county or build, based on this particular fee, if that's your driver decision maker. And I think if we are gonna, like, reevaluate as a larger picture, I don't see them going, I don't see setting this new base at 8.5% here is probably going to be too high in that longer-term situation, I guess, is sort of where I'm standing. And I think we're, we have a little bit more information now, and we're further along than we were making the decision, you know, earlier this year about projecting where things might land.
David?
Yeah. So, no, and I agree. I mean, I, I agree with what's being set up here. I mean, and you take a look at single-family residential, you're talking about a $1,500 increase where, I mean, over the last five years, you've probably seen building costs increase from $200 a square foot to 350 to 425 a square foot, which is, you know, astronomical at this point. So now, are, are we going to be breaking the bank when it comes to somebody, whether they're building here or not, for 1,500 bucks? I doubt it. But with the review of the program, I would like to see those numbers that way as we go forward, and it is my understanding, is this, is this an increase for a single year, or is this an increase for over two years?
We just didn't do the update in 2023, so it's the increase from 2022 to 2024.
Okay.
So it's covering two years.
Thank you.
Mr. Morris, were you gonna say something?
Well, I was just gonna mention, and you've kind of said that up here also, but if by chance, when we do this study, which we are in the middle of right now, and we'll be bringing it back to you hopefully soon, if by chance it showed that we were too high, it'll bring the, we will adopt what that shows, and it'll bring it actually down to what current rates are. And then, of course, they will still have the inflation factor in there that we would look at on an annual basis, so.
I guess my question for staff would be, do you happen to know what it is in Folsom? Is it higher than El Dorado County?
Yes.
I actually don't know the answer to that.
Okay. My guess is it's certainly higher than here.
Oh, I'm sure it is.
And I'm guessing it's higher than El Dorado County, and they are selling houses and have sold houses like hotcakes down there, so it's not, yeah, no.
Yeah. My experience watching the city versus everyone else is we're usually behind the curve with a lot of those things.
I'm perfectly happy being behind the curve on, on lower fees.
Well, so we sit down and look at what all those fees are used for. Okay. Do we have any further discussion on that?
No. I think I, I'm just, I'm gonna end up being a no on this, just to be consistent on where we are when it comes to inflationary rates on fees like this, just like we were on garbage.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
No.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. We will move to 12.2. No, we'll move to 12.1. That was 11.1. Now we're on 12. Discussion action items.
Let us not forget the retired annuitants.
12.1.
Otherwise.
Consider adoption of a resolution adopting retired annuitant agreement with Steve Yule as interim community services director. And also, I'd just like to acknowledge that, that we're losing Terry Zeller and, and all his good service to the city. I don't want to overlook that with this item also. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, I want to reiterate that, too. We have got a, we'll miss Terry. We appreciate the work that he's done over the last four, four years? Is that about right, Terry? Almost five, yeah. And he's done some good things for the city, and we appreciate the work that he's done. He's moving on to, in my discussion, hopefully it's gonna be a good opportunity for him, and we, we appreciate what he's done and wish him the best moving forward. However, that leaves us with a hole that we need to fill. I evaluated, you know, kind of options that we have and what we could do going forward to, at least for the interim, while we see what our permanent solution is. And I felt one of, one of the options would be to consider Steve Yule, who worked for the city for about 35 years, I think it was, when he retired a few years ago, five, four or five years ago now, I guess. And so I talked to Steve. He was perfectly willing to consider coming back on an interim basis to fill in and keep us going while we do a recruitment. So what you have before you tonight is the approval of a resolution approving an agreement with Mr. Yule as retired annuitant, as an interim community services director to operate the department. Couple of things I will mention before I sign the agreement with Mr. Yule. I actually have, according to CalPERS rules, I have to have a recruitment open for the, for the full-time position. So it's proposed that he start on March 6th. That's two days before Mr. Zeller leaves, and so there'll be some overlap there. They can look at what needs to be done, where, where they're at on different projects and et cetera, and, and be ready for that. So prior to that March 6 date when he starts, we will get the recruitment open for this position. I'm looking at some options of how we wanna do that going forward, but we will get it going. I can answer any questions you have. I know some of you know Steve Yule and some of you don't, but I am very confident, I think he had a, a great career here, and I'm very confident that he can step in and, and keep things going and, and move forward so we don't lose momentum on some very important projects that we have. As you know, we have the, the pickleball courts, of course, that we're waiting on. We have the Lions Park irrigation, which is a huge one that's, Terry's been moving forward, and hopefully Steve can pick up and keep that going. The downtown restrooms, I know we've been working, Terry's been working on design of those and how to remodel those and get those up to speed. So those are just a few, but there's the, the master, the, the fees for parks, the master fee study for parks and that we're looking at, that, we're in right in the middle of that one. So got a lot of big things going in, in Parks and Recreation, and it's important that we have somebody that can, can keep that going while we go through this recruitment. So happy to answer any questions you have regarding this, so.
Questions from the council? No? Okay. We will open this to public comment.
Good evening, Ryan Carter. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Terry. I know you spin a lot of plates. A lot of it goes unnoticed, but, you know, we see you out there in the community helping us, especially with downtown events, with the volunteer days and with everything that you do. We just wanna say thank you, and hopefully this new opportunity brings you everything that you want, and we're gonna miss you. So, thank you.
Anyone else? None? We'll bring this back to council. Vice Mayor?
Well, I remember Steve Yule when he was a young pup. Yeah, Steve's a good guy, and he'll do a good job, and so I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Yeah. I worked with Steve for 10 years while I was on Park and Rec Commission, and I think we'll be in good hands moving things forward, though we will miss you, Terry.
Yes.
Okay. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to 12.2. Consider adopting a resolution authorizing the Director of Community Services to negotiate a contract with On the Spot Janitorial for Custodial Services for City Hall for a monthly cost of $2,600 a month effective April 1, 2024, and authorizing the Director of Community Services to execute the same. Mr. Zeller?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this resolution is to forge a contractual relationship with a new company for cleaning and sanitation of City Hall on Center Street, and that would be replacing our current company that's under contract. We've had that contract since May of 2018, and it was recommended that our department end the current contract and seek new company to contract janitorial services with. So we went ahead and put some inquiries, email and phone inquiries out, and did get responses from three companies. Kling Cleaning and Floor Maintenance out of Diamond Springs, On the Spot Janitorial, also out of Diamond Springs, and third company, we didn't get a response to the RFP, but we did hear from them, Absolute Perfection Cleaning Services. So we did receive two of the proposals from the three respondents, and the most qualified low bid was from On the Spot Janitorial, and like it said, monthly cost of $2,600. And so this isn't, this cost is in line with current charges for this type of work. We just have not seen a, an increase for several years, and so this is, might look like a little bit of sticker shock, but it is, it's in line. So just in, in brief, the contract will continue to require cleaning on Tuesdays and Thursdays after hours, and then one weekend day, and this is all surface cleaning and sanitation of all the public areas, the front stairwell, office floors, trash removal, cleaning and sanitizing of restrooms and kitchenettes. So staff does recommend approving this proposal with On the Spot Janitorial and allowing myself to negotiate an annual contract renewable up to three years, and I can take any questions from the council.
Questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open this to public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring this back to council for further discussion and a motion.
I'll move the item.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Nell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, that brings us to 13. Council reports from other agency meetings. El Dorado Transit Authority, we did not meet. El Dorado County Transportation Commission?
We did not meet.
LAFCO?
Did not meet.
SECOC?
Yes, we did meet. I think the big discussion there was on the blueprint, which is the metropolitan planning document that we do, and it's for the six regions. It also includes the SCS, which is Sustainable Community Strategy, which is SB 375, 19% greenhouse gas emissions that every municipality and jurisdiction has to comply with. So a lot of discussion there, really about what, you know, what type of planning, how many houses will be built, what those roads will look like. So it, it has less of an impact on us in a sense, you know, everything, you know, east of, of El Dorado Hills, you know, that's really where the big developments are at. I mean, we have, our stuff's de minimis when it comes to, it's budget dust when it comes to these overall plans, like for Placerville and really for, you know, if anything else pops up. But a lot of discussion there, a lot of developers and builders were in attendance for really this first meeting of the blueprint. Well, we've had a lot of meetings. This is the first one where we dug in a little bit deeper into it, and you know, what track that we want to go. Is it like, is it more of an infill track? Is it more greenfield, which is new development track? Or is it sort of a synthesis of those two things? So, you know, Sacramento, lots of, lots of discussion amongst the Sacramento people, because that's where the bulk of the, really of where the, and Placer County, too. I mean, they have high growth there as well. So it'll be interesting to see as we go forward. June will be sort of the big, next big deadline where we kind of pick a path going forward as an organization, and then, and then we, you know, we kind of move forward and see where it all ends up. I will say that the 19% reduction in greenhouse gas, it will be a very difficult number to hit, and it's not just us. It is the entire state of California. So it's, you know, SCAG down in Southern California, it's, you know, MTC in the Bay. So there's a lot of big dogs that are gonna be in the same, you know, position that we are. Doesn't mean that you can't, like, just say, oh, well, no one's gonna make it, then I guess we just don't do it. That's not quite how the law works. And if they were ever gonna make an example of somebody, it would be the Sacramento region, because we have probably the least amount of political clout than the Bay Area or Los Angeles. So we don't really want to be in that position. I don't know what the final, you know, numbers will look like, but it will be challenging to get there. And a lot of that will depend on what we all agree to as well. And, you know, a lot of these are 20/50 projections, so it's hard to say exactly where all this will end up. But we have very smart people at SECOC that use a lot of this forecasting. So it's very eggheadish, but I wanted to at least give a little update on that. So there you go.
Thank you, Councilmember Saragosa. Pioneer Energy?
Yes, we did meet. We have a, we came to an agreement on working with a new solar company to bring out a new solar program for Pioneer Energy. It will be solar panels, including battery backups for the homes. This will be on the home side of the meter instead of before the meter, so it'd be after the meter. Once they get the website and everything launched, then I can give a little bit more out there, because we're still working with the company. There will be a per kilowatt charge and a fixed charge, but once it is set, it is set for 25 years. So this will actually help out, like, people like landlords if they want to do something on that side of it, to encourage people to rent from them, and at the same time, you know, give them a discount when it comes to some of their energy costs. So, yeah, so once they get a little bit more of it rolled out and we get a little bit more information going, I'll be able to release a little bit more.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Yarborough. That sounds exciting. Placerville Fire Safe Council, we didn't have our official meeting, but had met a couple times regarding the March 23rd event. And Opportunity Knox?
Sorry, there will be a meeting on Friday. I have a work conflict and will not be able to attend, but the action items on there are creating a grants committee, formalizing the HHSA as an administrative energy for the COC for all grants, and then funding the budget for the lived experience advisory board. So those are the only action items on that meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Gottberg.
I'll have a question. How's the, the transition going from, to the permanent, I don't know if that, to the, you know, the permanent facility?
Across the street.
Across the street, yeah. I mean, is it still on track, or?
As of the last update that I received, yes. We haven't received an update for several months at the COC at this point on that specific item. So I can, I can ask next time I'm at a meeting if it's not on our agenda.
Yeah, I've had a birdie tell me, so I'm just interested, that's why. So it might be good to bring it in.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number 14. Requests for future agenda items. Oh, public comment on our council reports, sorry. Seeing none, we will move on to item 14. Requests for future agenda items. Seeing none? We will, do I need to take public comment on our no comment? Okay, thank you. Number 15. City manager and staff reports. 15.1. Acknowledge and file the HDL sales tax and economic reports for the quarter ending September 30th, 2023. Mr. Warren?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have some relatively good news for you. You may recall over the past four quarters, we've had decreases in your sales tax, and for the first time in four quarters, we have some positive news. So your Bradley Burn sales tax or your general fund sales tax actually experienced on the cash basis a $5,867 increase, or 0.4%, baby steps. When you consider the back taxes that were included in that figure and adjustments, corrections, it actually ended up being about a negative $15,554 or negative 0.9%. That was primarily due to decreases in autos and transportation, building construction, and fuel and service stations. We budgeted an increase of $9,234, 0.56%, pretty conservative for that quarter. So the difference is about $24,788 or 1.46 percentage points below budget. Similar, El Dorado County experienced a 2.1% decrease, SAC region 1.5 negative, and the state of California 1.7. So pretty much in line with the state. We appreciate all of our businesses, especially our top 25, and Shell and Tractor Supply were added to the list, and then Safelite Auto Unglass and Savmart dropped off. Some more relatively good news. Measure H, J, and L performed even better. Measure J on the cash basis experienced a $14,788 increase, or 4.0%. When you adjust for back taxes and adjustments, it ended up being about $11,865 or 3.1% decrease. The budget assumed an $878 increase, or 0.23%. So we were about $12,743 or 3.33% percentage points below budget. The primary decrease is primarily due to building and construction, autos, transportation, businesses and industry, and general consumer goods. Overall, the projected sales tax and economic data that they provided us as of December is slightly more optimistic. It's first time again in several quarters, as compared to the September report. So that was good news. So we're moving in the right direction. We're just taking baby steps to get there. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
It's, I, I would know where to put this item, but I want you to tell me, where do our cannabis stores fall? Which category? I would have them in food and drugs, but that seems like painfully obvious.
That's exactly it. That was a great.
Okay, boom. See, I knew the answer to that question. All right, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Saragosa?
Yes. Thank you, Dave. Just a quick question on, and this won't matter going forward, but when we had, like, Rite Aid listed as one of our, was that, was that like a combined number when?
It was, and with the closure of the store in Fairlane, I suspect they may drop off the top 25.
Yeah, gotcha.
Unfortunately, but.
Understood. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Open this to public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to 15.2. Receive and file January's 2024 police report. Stats, Chief Ren.
Thank you, Mayor. Still a work in progress on how we're gonna present these. We know.
We miss our old reports.
Correct. So with those old reports, using the old Tragenet system, we had to data mine all that stuff, and that's how it was accumulated. And there was always a margin of error, because you're taking off a screen and putting it into your own, own work. I think I told you last time, you know, I made the mistake of printing out our stats, utilizing this new system, and it printed out 92 pages for one month. So that's how granular the data gets for us with this new system, which is great for me, because I can make on-the-fly changes to our deployment schedules, utilizing, you know, the limited resources that we have in the most efficient way possible. So loud and clear about the pie charts, we just have to figure out how to do it. The system does it for us, and we printed out a pie chart, but it was literally every, you couldn't tell what it was. It just, it was a mess to look at. So if, if you're happy with the categories, that's kind of one of the biggest things that I wanted to check with you with, then we can start to break, break that down from there. Always welcome to email me if you want to see something additional in, in the monthly stats. We'll be happy to provide that. Good news is, over the last six months, we have seen a decrease in theft and burglary-related offenses, so it's trending in the right direction. Again, our officers are handling anywhere from 2,000 to 2,500 calls per month. About, about 60% of those are still proactive in nature, which that's about the right ratio that you want. You want officers out there hunting for criminals and holding them accountable for their deviant behavior. Our response time still is the envy of, of the entire public safety region. We're sub four minutes. We, we almost got, we almost broke three down to two something, but we had a flyer in there that kind of messed our, our stats up. Briefly, since I have your attention, for the police department, just a quick status. Next time you see Officer Eric Tudawon, congratulate him. He is our 2023 Officer of the Year. There'll be more information put out about that. If you'd like, I'll drag him in here and make him give you a speech.
Nice.
We are losing Officer Singh. His last day is tomorrow. We expected that. Officer Singh's brother and, and other family members work for Sacramento County Sheriff's Office. So his desire to leave is nothing more than to be closer to his family and to get the opportunity to work with his brother. So we understand that. We, we wish him all the luck in the world, and he would definitely be somebody that would be eligible for rehire with, without any second thought. We do have Reserve Officer Michael Ivanoff, who we're gonna offer a full-time job for, so there's, the seat's not gonna get cold. The thing with Michael, though, he was going to be here today, but he volunteers a youth program at his church and was playing basketball and broke his ankle. So I told him, I can't hire him full-time until he fixes, until he gets that, that issue resolved. So we do have him down at the police department handling administrative stuff and learning the backbones of, of what policing is. Officer Nicole Iserman today completed her field training program. She successfully tested out of the program, so she'll be a solo beat officer. So if you see her out and about, wave at her. I told her she may have to sit on a phone book, though. She's kind of a tiny, tiny officer, so. But she's wonderful, she's wonderful to have. And again, I'll echo what I said earlier today. I've just had the, the absolute fortune to hire amazing men and women, and I hope I don't have to hire anybody else. I hope everybody stays and is, is happy and continues to serve the city in the manner in which we expect. But man, what a joy to be around these guys and gals. They're just phenomenal people. They really are. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And again, I'm looking for maybe some feedback on what you want to see in the monthly stats going forward.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Saragosa?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I think one thing I, I like to continue to see in it, from our previous ones, were the PC290s and the HRSOs. I think that's always helpful information to the public for the sex offenders, and, you know, especially for those that are unhoused and where they are, you know, especially if they have that higher level status in terms of their reoffense, so that we know where they're at and people know they're out there. So that would be good. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Yeah, I kind of like the year-to-year comparison, so I kind of see, are we going up, are we going down, what it kind of looks like overall?
Man, I was hoping. So that, that data is on the other system, so we would have to, I, I think we can go back to what has already been compiled for you and, and just do that. It'll just take a little bit of footwork until we can start getting some, some years behind us with this current.
So a year from now, we'll start getting some good data.
Well, no, no, we'll pull that out. It's just gonna be on, you know, surely, when we, previously, when I presented the monthly stats, then we would transfer those to our, our web, our webpage, website. So it's on there. It would be just a matter of having somebody go back and make those inputs, and we can definitely, we can definitely do that.
Okay, I don't want to.
I was kind of hoping to dodge that bullet, but yeah.
Well, you have a guy with a broken ankle.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
He may be the guy.
Okay, just saying.
Okay, open this to public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back, and we will move to 15.3. Review of the draft private sewer lateral information handout and draft certificate of lateral compliance. Mr. Rivas?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just to give a little background, the private sewer lateral ordinance was adopted back in December of 2023, and the purpose of that ordinance is to regulate private sewer laterals for the protection of health and safety of the public by reducing or eliminating the discharge of sewage into the environment and to reduce or eliminate sources of inflow and infiltration, also known as INI, into the city sewer system in compliance with the city's sanitary sewer system state permit. This ordinance did become effective January 11th of this year, and following its adoption, the council had requested that staff create a handout for the benefit of the public and interested parties regarding implementation of the ordinance, attached to your staff report or the draft of the private sewer lateral information handout and the draft certificate of lateral compliance for your review and review by the general public. These drafts are still a work in progress, and we're encouraging any suggested revisions, and in particular, the informational handout, to improve the usefulness of these documents. So the staff will also be reaching out to the El Dorado County Association of Realtors. We'll be working on creating appropriate disclosure documents. Staff, and I just want to add that staff is looking at adding a pictorial example of a common private sewer lateral, showing the connections from the individual building drains to the connection to the public sewer as well. So there's, there's a number of those. We're trying to find one that would, would best simplify what that sort of looked like. So with that, you know, staff is open to any comments you'd like to make on these handouts.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Saragosa?
Thank you, and thank you, thank you for this, Pierre. This is great. Question on the, just on the process. So when we do the verification inspection from the city's side, does that, will that mean, like, so I, I go and get mine done, it needs it, you know, there's whatever, we have, I have a problem. So I, I get it relined or redone, what have you. Does, do you need like a second camera inspection at that point? I'm just trying to think of what the process is for the, are we gonna, like, bring a camera person out, or do we have to meet the inspector there with it after it's all been done, or will it just, if we have a builder do it and it's certified, is that enough, or do we still need to bring out another camera crew to have the city look at it?
The building official will be able to examine the video that's taken by a licensed plumbing contractor, and so hopefully that would, that would suffice. And if any issues are, are discovered from that, then it would be, if it's a common sewer lateral, of course, you're gonna have all those users then participate in the fixing of that common sewer lateral. But if it's an individual building drain, or the individual lateral from the building to, to the common sewer, or to the public sewer, well, then that would have to be replaced or fixed. And typically, those aren't camera. Those would be just replaced. And typically, those aren't cameraed, those would be just replaced.
Just replace, gotcha. Okay, I'm just trying to hopefully cut down on a step maybe if.
Yeah, and I think, Councilmember Saragosa, as long as, you know, we know, knew what the problem was when we camered it.
Right.
And then a contractor comes out and does the repair and shows what the repair was.
And signs off.
And signs off. I don't think you would have to camera it again.
Okay, great. That's why I just want to, you know, more work for everybody. That's why I was trying, okay, thank you.
Yeah, if Mayor, and I can just add, all, all this would be performed under a permit, so it'd follow the typical process of any other, just like any other building permit would follow with an inspection and then the finaling of the permit.
Well, I'm pretty sure I need to do this, so.
You'll be our guinea pig.
I'll be a guinea pig, and I think in a couple of months, you know, because I don't think it's ever been done as far as I know, and I've had it, have mine weeded it a couple of times, rotor rooted, so, you know, we'll see how it goes.
We, we have not had a, a, anybody apply yet, so.
I want my certificate.
We welcome you.
Be the first.
Be the guinea pig.
I know, yeah, exactly. I just got my.
Any other questions? No? We'll open this to public comment.
Do-it-yourself sewer lining. Million.
Sue Rodman, Measure H, Measure L, and part of having a sewer system that works for everyone is that everyone has to do their part to make sure that all the, all the pipes connect. If you don't have, if you, if you have problems, then everybody has to connect so that everybody is protected. And I thought, when I, when I looked at the handouts, I thought they were very good, very clear, and easy to read, a big improvement, I thought. So, good job.
Great. Thank you, Sue.
Good evening, just, Ryan Carter, just a real quick question. I didn't see anything in the handout about cost. Are these, are the certificates going to be free? You know, I know we've gone through a number of meetings, and we've never gotten any information about how much the certificate is going to cost, so anyway, that'd be good to include. If there's going to be a cost, you should include that in the handout. If it's going to be free, we should probably include that in the handout also, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone else? Okay, bring that back. Do we have a cost for that? Well, the cost goes to?
It's a building permit.
The cost is the cost of the building permit.
Okay.
So instead of getting a final on the permit, you'll get your COLC. There isn't an added cost for the COLC. It would be the cost of actually, for the permit.
Great, thank you. All right. Upcoming items, I will let you read for yourself, which brings us to number 17. Adjournment at 6:33 PM. All right. Thank you, everyone. Good evening.